All right, and I think we are up, Ms. Downhour. I'm trying to unmute you, but it's not working, so you go for it.
Can you hear me?
Sure can.
Okay, we'll call this Finance Committee meeting to order for Monday, May 4th. And boy, it sure came around very quickly that we got to meet again. So, welcome, everybody. It is 6:03 PM. And the first resolution I have is Temporary Resolution 6620, which is coming through Water Water Pollution Control. This is dealing with the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency Loan Funds. So, Mr. James, I'll turn it over to you.
Can you hear me now? Is everybody, are you able to hear?
We sure can. Go ahead, sir.
Okay, sounds good. This is one of those things that is the opportunity to upgrade and repair our Lawrence Street wastewater treatment plant facility. And Stephen Wellsed's on with us if he's got any other comments that he'd like to make. Go ahead, Stephen.
Yeah, thank you. Can I, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, yeah, so here Temporary Resolution 6620. Again, we are, we have these Lawrence Street Water Pollution Control Facility upgrades that are coming up. Last upgrades to the plant were done in the early mid 90s. It's been 25, 30 years. That's basically the useful life of the plant with regards to most equipment there. So, there's a variety of things that need upgraded, improved, replaced, et cetera. And this project we're undertaking is currently in design. But we are going to, in order to pay for it, or at least cover the initial costs, we're going to get a loan from Ohio EPA through their Water Pollution Control Loan Fund Program. And this legislation is just basically allowing the mayor to, you know, sign the application and any contracts with the EPA that are necessary to get that done. And I sent an email earlier today just to clarify. There was an error, a small error in the legislation noting that it was a 0% interest loan. That is not the case. I confused that with a different program that we've been using for some other recent projects, but that one does not apply here. So, I do want to clarify that as well. I'd be happy to answer any questions, but that's basically what we're looking at here.
Stephen, what is the interest rate? I'm sorry, what is the interest rate? Because I have not had a chance to review that email.
Denise told me that the current rate is 1.12%, but she said it does change with the prime rate, so it could potentially be lower when we apply. The application we're looking at submitting in next month. And then I don't know exactly when they set the rates, so EPA, for each given loan. But that's what we're looking at right now, is a little over 1%.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Stephen, you're okay with two readings, right?
Yes, two readings. Like I had mentioned to you, we want to get, submit this in June, sometime to get early on the pecking order, so to speak, to make sure it doesn't get pushed back. One of the previous projects we had pushed back because we submitted it a little later. So, two readings in order for us to keep on that timeline will work.
Sounds good. Anybody got any other questions?
Yeah, I do.
Go ahead.
So, how much are we talking here? I didn't hear a principal amount.
I did give an updated estimate from our engineer today. Again, I think I mentioned email, we're at the point where they're 60% complete. So, of course, you know, this is a rough estimate. But right now, we're looking at 21,215,000 is what the estimate they have is for construction. And that is in line with what we were anticipating from the start, somewhere between 20 and 25 million. So, latest right now, 21 million, a little over 21 million for construction.
So, let me ask you the follow-up then. How, that's a lot of money. How, what is the plan for payback? Is it already, are the rates already affect, or water pollution rates already in alignment with the expectation of that debt? Or are we going to be having to increase those rates again?
So, what I do know at this point is that we do have a rate study that is currently, a consultant is currently working on. So, that is not completed to this point, but as part of our submittal to Ohio EPA, we do need to submit the rate study and what we anticipate rates are going to be going forward, so that they know that we can repay that and what it's going to take to repay that. So, unfortunately, I do not have that answer at the current time. I don't know when that rate study is anticipated being done. It's going to be done by next council meeting, two weeks. But I know they are working on it, and that's what they're going to look at is, you know, what adjustments to rates do need to be made, if any, in order to make sure this can be paid back.
A couple of follow-ups to that regard then. Are, are these $21 million in upgrades, are these required by Ohio EPA, or are these normal maintenance activities?
I think, my understanding is these are generally normal maintenance activities. Some of the items we're making improvements on are potentially items that maybe we, we do have to do in order to meet certain regulatory requirements, or maybe regulatory requirements that may come down the road. But, and I'm sorry, I, I don't have as much background and knowledge about that sort of thing. That's something I could certainly inquire with Mike. He's been obviously closely involved in this, Mike Nixon. But for the most part, I think it's just, again, replacing aged equipment. Again, for the most part, 25, 30 years is generally your expected life in these plants. So, that's generally time I'm looking at when we look at major upgrades.
Yeah, we'll grill Mike another time. I think you see Paul has his hand up.
Yes, we have had some failure at this site, Mike, Councilman Stotin. We've been really working with a few things the last year or two. So, we're talking, basically, we've got some true failures on some lines. So, this is a time to actually look at the whole system. We've had it evaluated. But we didn't have any clue it'd be this level. But we've had some line deteriorations going into there. We've had to divert some things to other, you know, storage areas that we're storing in there. But this is a, this is a, we actually don't have a choice. We gotta do something there for sure.
Well, so did I hear you say you didn't expect it to be this much?
No, what I'm saying is, at the time, I had no idea how much it would be, because we just encountered the problems. We did some temporary readjustments to divert some of the sewage because the lines were deteriorating. But at that time, we realized even then, we're going to get some consultants in there to figure out how serious the problem is, evaluate. And that's really what we've been doing the last couple of years. Then we went into this, to do this contract, to give us a good plan and see what kind of improvements we need to do, you know?
So, I'll just ask one more question, then I'll defer back to Holly. So, am I to understand correctly that our current rate structure has not anticipated this spend? And that we need to increase rates to pay for the spend, or, I mean, that's what I'm looking for. This sounds like a pretty big nut.
I honestly am anticipating us to increase our rates because of it, yes. But that's where we're going to get a rate consultant to determine that for us. And you've seen us use that in the past. Councilman Stotin, you've been around when we've done that and been able to get those things lined up. So, we're just not shooting in the dark. But we'll get it justified, and then we bring that to council. With being sewage, it's like sanitation. Those have to come before council. I can't with my signature increase those rates. Those have to go before council. And we'll have a plan to develop that, yes.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay, hang on just one second, guys. I just want to make one additional comment. So, personally, my expectation would be that we have that rate analysis done before we approve signing an application for a multimillion dollar loan. Because I don't know about anybody else, but now is not the time to raise water rates on the citizens of Lancaster. I just want to put that out there, because with COVID-19, people being unemployed, businesses shutting down, the fact that we have a tax income levy that, I haven't seen the election results. I'm assuming it failed. I don't know that for sure, unfortunately. I apologize. But to go out and ask for more money from the citizens for their water, I think we really need to think about that long and hard. Bob, you had your hand up.
Go ahead, Bob.
Thank you. I don't have my debt service spreadsheet with me, but I do believe, Tom, some debt is rolling off that will allow free up cash flow for debt service. And I think this was the, the deal. This was supposed to hit, I think, in 18 or 19. And we've got permission from the EPA to defer this down the road. Stephen, do you recall that waiver?
Sorry, say that again, Bob. I think.
I said we had this scheduled earlier, and I think we requested EPA to defer the start date down the road. But I know some debt is rolling off. We may or may not have to raise rates on this. I just don't know.
I, I don't know if that's specific to these upgrades. You might be thinking of the equalization. So, for our CSO issue and coming into compliance with combined sewer overflows, we do have an equalization basin that we do need to put at the plant there. And I know that we have been able to push that a little bit farther back as we make improvements and kind of get better evaluation on what we need there. That might be what you're thinking of for this. I don't know that this is specifically been pushed back. I'm not aware of it.
I knew, I knew we pushed something back. I couldn't remember. And Tom, we'll look at the debt service rolling off by 2022. Will that help the cash flow?
Holly, I just have a question. I just want to confirm. I mean, this, this, this application is just allowing us to participate. It's not, this isn't really putting the stake in the ground on a number, is it?
So, if I may interject, this, as it's currently worded, the resolution does allow him to both submit the application to start off and sign contracts. So, hypothetically, if, you know, if this is approved, the mayor could sign contracts to participate in this without further city council approval. So, if that's a concern, maybe we up, we revise that to just allow him to submit the application, so that doesn't slow us down and then sign contracts later. That's just an idea. Throw my two cents in there.
Well, I think that's a good point, and Holly made a good point. You know, the fact is, you know, if this is going to, and it likely will require a raise in rates, and Bob's going to let us know if any, anything else is falling off of here. But if, if an action that we're taking to, to do perfectly legitimate upgrades requires a raise of rates, I certainly think we need to, from a council perspective, kind of follow that process in order. So, we're accountable to, A, you know, what we're funding a $21 million loan, and, and B, you know, the, the rate increase that goes along with that. Holly, I'm in complete agreement with you.
Mr. James, you also had your hand. I'm sorry, Melody. I didn't see you in time.
Just let me add, in the opportunity, I had to do all the inspections with Mike Nixon. The wastewater treatment plant deals with a lot of corrosives. He's got a lot of worn out equipment, and in order for us to maintain the quality of water that we're discharging, this may not be an option for us to, to kick it on down the road any further. Now, I don't know that for certain. But I, I'm very much supporting the fact that we need to get into the upgrades. And some of the upgrades actually will save us money by putting in what they call variable speed motors that will greatly decrease the electrical cost that they have to run the plant.
Understood. Thank you for that information. Melody? You have to unmute yourself, Mel.
Someone has to unmute her.
Somebody has to unmute her. I don't have that control. There we go. She's unmuted now.
Go ahead, Melody.
Okay, the only other question that I would have and would be, you know, once, you know, if we would get this loan, is that rate locked in? But I think we've brought up a lot of good questions here tonight. And I apologize that I didn't ask these questions ahead of tonight's meeting. But, you know, these are questions that we have to get answered before we could give the mayor the opportunity to sign a contract. That's my opinion.
Mr. Martin, your hand is up.
So, Ms. Downhour, I think we'll make sure that Mike Nixon is on here next time. Yes, you'll, you'll just be having the first reading tonight, and we'll get some more thorough information out to you. But we'll have to get him modernized to join us on this type of format.
Yes, and the only last thing I'll say is, while I understand that upgrades are necessary, and a lot of them are necessary to save us money and, and bring the plant into a state where we don't have failures, my big question would be, what upgrades are really, really necessary to sign this big of a loan and make sure that we understand the full picture? And right now, we do not have the full picture. Tom?
And, and, and Tom, Mr. James, I just want to be clear. I don't disagree with the fact that we need to maintain our plants and the plan for, you know, the reasons you're supporting it. We have never not, in this, you know, in the city, as I've been sitting on council, we've never not supported maintaining and upgrading our facilities as we've needed to. This isn't about that. It's about the increase to the ratepayer, and we need to help them understand, hey, this is what's coming and this is why. Kind of no different than we did that when we talked about and had the, the other wastewater plant built, you know, a few years back. So, it's not about, you know, I disagree with the need. It's, it's the cost, and we just need to manage that.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so I have two readings. Next council meeting will look for additional information that we've asked for, and we'll, we'll go from there. Any other questions before we close out this resolution and move on to the next one? Okay, the next one is 67-20. This is coming out of Public Works, and it is a resolution dealing with the LDOT fund. I know there was a large email from Mr. Hints, I believe, that detailed out a lot of the information. I did not put it in your agenda because I figured you all would have read it, and Mr. Hints or Cory can elaborate on it. So, Cory?
I got you, Cory. Go ahead.
Yep, yeah, Greg sent out the details on this, and he is on the call. So, I'll actually go ahead and defer to him on where this money's coming from and coming into. So, Mr. Hints?
Good evening. The $12,000 of the safety grants coming through BWC, Gretchen helped us out with that. So, we'll be, we're moving forward with purchase of that equipment. The 15-3, as I detailed out in my email, came from the light installation up at, up on Main Hill in front of the county properties. There were, there were lights there a couple, or a few years back, and they got taken out in an auto accident, and the county decided they wanted them put back in. So, they paid to put them back in, and then we're, we took them over and we'll maintain them from here on out. The $29,200 amount, we got $19,200 in the mail today. The remaining $10,000 will come once all the repairs and installations are done. That was for, they, the estimates that we sent out initially were for the labor and equipment times. They were estimates. The insurance just asked that we just submit a copy of actuals once we're completed, and they'll send us a check for the remaining. The $5,000 was for the flashers downtown on Wheeling Street, where the public transit project happened there between Maine and Columbus. We installed flasher units down there. And these are, that carry transfer that $5,000 to cover the cost of another set and some materials that we had used on that down there. So, that, that is the total of everything we've got in this piece.
Okay, and Cory, I have Mr. James is your second, and I have three readings. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, does anybody have any questions regarding this resolution? Okay. That, that's all the resolution, those are all the resolutions I had for this evening. Anything else to come before Finance? Tom, do we want to ask for an update on where we are with federal funding, state funding, COVID? This is where we did it last time.
Yeah, and the mayor can give us an update from today. I think council or council, Congress should be back in center, back in session. And I believe they were holding hearings today. So, Mayor Scheffler?
Yeah, the Senate is back in session today. The House, it's, I haven't seen anything, but they're going to be back in session. I have not gotten any updates that the Senate took any action today on the federal level. As we said last week, all the stars seem to be aligned to get us some assistance, and we're continuing to work on that. I have a call, a board call with the Ohio Mayor's Alliance tomorrow morning at 9:45, which will decide on next steps to push forward. On the state front today, the Senate initiated legislation to allocate $350 million of the 1.2 billion that was sent as part of the CARES Act and the Coronavirus Relief Fund to the cities under the local government fund formula, which would yield us about one, somewhere between 1.2 and 1.3 million dollars. Unfortunately, it is still restricted to reimbursement for COVID-related direct expenses that exceed approved budgets. So, one of the possible solutions that Congress is considering is to just change the character of that money that's already appropriated to allow for it to be used for revenue, loss revenue replacement. So, the Senate is going to vote on that $350 million on Wednesday. The House has not come forward with, what they plan to do. And apparently, they haven't let the Senate know since they're not talking to each other at this point. So, we know some money is coming our way. It may get transferred. I think the bill calls for it to be transferred within 10 days. So, we may have something up to $1.3 million arriving in our, in the mail in the next two, three weeks. Unfortunately, at this point, we won't be able to spend it. But I'd rather have it in our bank account than in the state's bank account, because we have custody of it. I think that's about it as far as updates. I think you all saw Amy Hamilton's email yesterday, or on Friday, late Friday afternoon, I believe, that as far as tax revenue coming in, we are, we were down in April about $700,000 for, from returns being filed since the CARES Act extended the due date for tax returns from April 15th to July 15th. The state adopted that same calendar. So, taxpayers simply aren't filing their returns. I believe, and I don't remember the exact numbers down to the, to the individual, but there was something like 7,600 tax returns filed through April 30th of last year. And we had about half that many filed this year. So, taxpayers are just electing if they owe tax not to file their returns and pay it when they file them closer to July 15th. So, we anticipate, since that's based on 2019 income, that that money will come back in later, but just on a deferred basis. But sure doesn't help to write checks and pay expenses at this point. Any questions? Tom?
Couple of questions. So, explain exactly what 1.3, well, actually, we can't use it. But if, if it was unrestricted 1.3 million, that's about 5%, right? Of, of what we would anticipate, you know, be, if we were, that's 5% of our general fund.
It's probably about 5% of our annual budget, general fund budget, yes.
So, so, you know, to that regard, I mean, I think probably the, the real number is somewhere going to be between 15 and 20%, maybe, depending on how long, you know, how much longer Ohio is closed for business, so to speak. It could be even higher than that.
Yeah, that's possible. If, and, and so my first question was, what about the other eight and a half million dollars that's sitting in the state coffers that is supposedly restricted to local governments? And the answer I got was, well, for right now, there's questions about how Treasury is going to allow us to distribute that money. It does belong to this, to the local governments, cities, counties, townships, et cetera. So, the balance that, of the 850 million, if that all gets distributed and we are allowed to use that for lost income, that's about another $3.2 million that would be coming our way, assuming that gets dispersed in the same manner under the local government fund formula.
Yeah, so it's really, you know, it's kind of a hurry up and wait scenario. But every day that goes by, we're still, in theory, at full employment and, you know, needing to cut, indeed, to get into alignment with what our, you know, revenues are at the moment. And I understand that. I'm not in a hurry to cut jobs. Don't get me wrong. But, you know, it would just be nice to know what is is, so to speak.
You're telling me. Any other questions?
All right. Thanks for that update. And moving on to departmental updates. Ms. Sandy, I believe you had something?
Yes, I do. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, I would like to ask for permission from Finance to transfer money from Contract Services, which is where I pay for our publications, to Supplies to reimburse the Law Director's Office for postage, for mailing of letters to property owners for the Flats Memorial that I've already completed once, and we'll be sending another letter to notify the property owners once the public hearing is being scheduled. I also have the envelopes made up for the other two public hearings to be held as soon as that date is set. In the past, the Law Director's Office has absorbed the postage for such mailings. But with the tightening of the budget, I'd like to ask that the cost be put to the right department. I therefore would like to transfer the sum of $144.10 from 101.100.5207 to 101.15300 for the purchase of postage stamps from the post office. Of that amount, $110.10 will replace what has been used for the above-mentioned items from the Law Director's postage, and the remainder will be placed in the lockbox for future use of council mailings. I also need to order legislation books for the safe from Lilienthal. These books usually run around $262 per book with postage and handling included. These books are what hold the original legislation that is placed in the Hall, the Safe and City Hall. I would like permission to transfer that additional $524 from 101.15207 to 101.15300 to cover the cost of these books. This will cover the cost of one resolution book and one ordinance book. That is all.
Okay, I'm going to ask you a favor, because I did not get all that down in minutes.
I'll send it to you.
Please send it to me in an email.
I'll do that. I just want to show you. Here are the envelopes for the Flats Memorial that I've got. I've already sent them out once. Here they are, the second set that I have to send out, so. Just so you know, there, there is quite a bit.
Okay, so, Tom?
Yeah, I have no problem with this, obviously. Every, every dollar is important, and we shouldn't be appropriating new. So, if you can transfer the monies to the right places, I think we should go ahead and move forward with that.
Thank you.
All right. Any other departmental updates?
So, Paul Martin here. Just like the update on the Anex Building, somebody might have been driven by. Somebody goes across the street, and maybe could smell some of the odor of our roof being repaired today. It was a great sunny day, so they were on that, a two-week project. It's going to probably end up being just maybe around four weeks, just because of the amount of rain. Which, by the way, we are above normal greatly. weeks just because of the amount of rain. Which, by the way, we are above normal greatly for our rain precipitation that we've had. Uh, we have the two air conditioning units on top of the roof scheduled to be replaced, but they've worked from the north all the way to the south. They're up at the south end. There was one sheet that had to, uh, one sheet of steel after they tore it off. They had to replace a sheet of steel and we got some little bit of woodwork on the inside by the wall that we've got to replace. So I think the, uh, change orders can be kind of minimal at this time, but we're still moving forward, hopefully trying to get this done here in a timely manner. The county who rents our top floor space for June report, they're not, they started back a little bit today, but they're not fully in there. They're taken by a portment solely. Uh, but just want to let you know that project is moving forward. I accept, expect to really be within our budget because the big issues would have already been found by now. The second thing I'd like to mention is that I'm proud of our article that Chief Laura posted out. We are making, try to get out some messages out there. Uh, I know I want something from the fire department. Chief Ward's working, working on something. No matter what we do going forward, eventually we need to get our income tax levy passed, but I thought that was a good information piece of showing the value and the difficulty of our hiring process. So thanks a lot for Chief Laura. Uh, I think he's a good writer, did a good job. And we want to keep moving forward with our need to get our income tax levy passed someday. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other departmental updates? I don't see any, so I'll move on to President Oul. Do you have anything for tonight's meeting prep?
Yeah, just a couple of things very quickly. Thank you, Madam Chairman. Um, as we work through the agenda tonight, um, as we look at temporary ordinance thirty-two dash nineteen, this is the income tax ordinance that is on the table. And I had spoken with Angela White this past weekend and, you know, currently if, if you looked at our vote total, it was twenty-five, fourteen, four, and thirty, ninety-two against, three thousand and ninety-two against. So about fifty-five against percent to forty-four, forty-five percent against. First, that is a closing of the margin and the gap that, that we saw the last time. That's very good. Secondly, there are more outstanding ballots still out to be counted than there are no votes for our current levy. Now, as those votes come in, I guess my expectation is they're probably not all yeses. And so, uh, the no total is going to go up right along with the yes total. Um, but we should leave this on the table until that vote is completely counted and certified. So I still have hope that we might pull this out. I think it's possible. I'm not sure that it is probable. Um, and, uh, so we'll see what happens at the end of, of the certification. And then at that point, we can act on that legislation. Um, in addition, uh, I, the legislation you were just talking about for Ms. Sandy to make those transfers, that will come through city council, I think, at the next meeting. Um, Ms. Sandy has been able to set up the public hearing.
She's shaking her head no.
Oh, I asked Randall, he said yes.
I can actually do a transfer. I have a transfer of appropriation sheet that I can fill out, but I just needed council's approval or finance approval that I could go ahead and do that. So no legislation is needed.
Randall and I'll have a chat after the meeting. Thank you.
Sorry.
All right. So then we've dispensed with that. Um, Ms. Sandy did set up the, uh, next, not the next meeting, but our meeting on the eighth for Olive Dale. Um, and we've been able to secure that at obviously no cost and, uh, have plenty of room. So it's my hope that we will then schedule those public hearings for those three, uh, ordinances that Ms. Sandy was just talking about, um, for that date at Olive Dale. And then we'll have to deal with the public records training motion as well, once we get to unfinished business. So we'll do all of that within the regular meeting. That's all that I have.
Okay, great. Uh, are there any other items for finance? Yes, I see Mr. Stotin waving his hand.
Well, I just want to talk about that, uh, resolution sixty-twenty. Uh, my recommendation is to just withdraw that, uh, because that number isn't going to be accurate and we're going to have more than likely have resolution, resolutions coming forward that are going to be budget correcting, uh, legislations. So to table, it just keeps another item out there on the books that is probably not in reality. So, uh, my suggestion would be, uh, to just dispense with that by withdrawing and then wait until hopefully we have, um, resolutions to obviously bring income in. And then we'll be certainly doing budget realignments to align expenses to new revenues, assuming there's money to go with that. And then when I, my, my, my point is, is let's do it in one, you know, one bigger piece that cleans everything up versus chasing one line item in a budget that right now is not, uh, it's not needed.
I would agree.
Well, you get to, you get to make the motion to withdraw.
I do, I do. Okay. Uh, any discussion around that? Anybody have any issue with it? Hopefully not. Okay, anything else to come before finance? We are just a tad bit over. Melody, is your hand up or you just clicking your pencil? Okay. I can't hear, but she's putting her.
I unmuted you, Melody.
I'm getting ready to make a motion if we're ready to go.
Oh, we're ready to go.
I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Okay, we're adjourned at six thirty-nine PM.
Thank you all very much. The regular meeting of Lancaster City Council will begin at approximately six forty-five.
There is no place like Lancaster, Ohio and Fairfield County. And like you, I am proud to call them home. As a longtime resident of Lancaster and graduate of Lancaster High School, this community is important to me. And I want to provide superior customer service, professionalism, integrity, and honesty at the Connor Insurance Agency. I am committed to supporting local programs and projects through my volunteer work and board membership with several organizations. It has been a great honor to work with all the first responders throughout Lancaster, Fairfield County, and the state of Ohio to put on Kids and Cops Day, to be a part of Shop With A Cop alongside the Lancaster Police Department and JFS, and to help Lancaster Public Education Foundation raise funds to support our local public schools and teachers. These men and women work hard to protect and support our community, and I would like to take this moment to say thank you for all they do. My goal as a business owner and insurance agent is to provide my clients with the most appropriate services and coverage for their needs at a competitive rate. As an independent agent, I have several carriers to choose from, so I can customize your insurance coverage to fit your needs and desires. I strive to make sure there are no gaps in your coverage that could be harmful and just as important that you are not overinsured. I look forward to serving your insurance needs now and in the future. At Connor Insurance, we are here to serve you by protecting what is important to you. Please contact my office at seven four zero six five four two eight four eight for a full list of services and carriers, or visit my website, ConnorInsuranceAgency.com.
Almost everyone needs a car to get from point A to point B, and many families have two or more cars. At Carriage Company, located at ten thirty-one North Memorial Drive in Lancaster, we specialize in hard-to-find used cars. We can help you find exactly what you're looking for.
Come into the Carriage Company and check out our sweet deals.
Stop by today and let us help you, or visit us online at CarriageCompany.com.
The Frankie Smith Funeral Home and Crematory in Lancaster and the Johnson Smith Funeral Home in Baltimore have a long and wonderful history of serving our community. Feel free to give us a call at seven four zero six five three zero six five two. Stop in and see us at either of our two locations, four oh five North Columbus Street in Lancaster and two oh seven South Main Street in Baltimore. Respect for tradition, regard for change.
Welcome to this meeting of Lancaster City Council. Please stand and join me for a word of prayer. Father, we're thankful for this day and your blessings, thankful for all you do for us and how you've continued to bless us, lead, guide, and direct us. We pray you would continue to do so tonight with the work that is set before us. May you give us wisdom and help us to make decisions that are in the best interests of the citizens of Lancaster. May you continue to bless our first responders and those who are continually in harm's way regarding COVID-nineteen and other things. We ask for your protection and provision to be around them. Father, we pray tonight for your continued help. We're so thankful for your blessings and just ask that you would be with us in all that we do, in the name of Jesus. Amen. Amen. I hereby call this meeting of Lancaster City Council to order, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right. Just as a quick reminder, the seems the easiest way to do this is for me to hit the unmute button and, uh, let everyone, uh, be unmuted while the clerk calls the roll. So I'm going to do that now. That will include members of administration. So if you want to put yourself back on mute, please do so at that time. With that, we'll ask that the clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Here.
Mrs. Downhour?
Here.
Mr. Hall?
Mr. James?
Here.
Mr. Matlin?
Here.
Mr. McDaniel?
Here.
Mr. Schoonover?
Here.
Mr. Stotin?
Here.
And Mrs. Teener?
Here.
Very good. Let the record reflect that all, well, eight of the nine members of city council are in attendance. Uh, can we get a motion to excuse, uh, Mr. Schoonover? Would you make a motion to excuse Mr. Hall?
Yeah, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we excuse, uh, Mr. Hall.
Ms. Bobbitt, could get a second?
A second. I just wanted to see, I just wanted you to see the young one here.
I see that little baby. I'm glad didn't, I'm glad, I'm always glad when I'm not the youngest one on the call. So, uh, that looks great. Yeah, that's great. All right, we have a motion and a second to excuse Mr. Hall from tonight's meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Reading and disposing of the journal.
I'd like to present the regular meeting minutes dated April twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the journal.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to receive and file the journal. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Reports of city officials.
Email dated May first, twenty twenty regarding water, water pollution control meeting submitted by Mr. James. Email dated Mar, May first, twenty twenty regarding LFD overtime legislation submitted by Chief Ward. Email dated May fourth, twenty twenty regarding water, water pollution control meeting submitted by Superintendent Mike Nixon. Email dated May fourth, twenty twenty regarding agenda for five for finance committee submitted by Mrs. Downhour. And finally, an email dated May fourth, twenty twenty regarding LFDOT legislation submitted by Mr. Stotin.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the reports of city officials.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to receive and file the reports of city officials. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Are there any communications?
There are none to be presented.
We have no special presentations or awards that I'm aware of tonight. Are there any petitions or memorials?
There are none to be presented.
We have no voters or taxpayers present with us on this meeting, though once again, they are joining us, uh, through either Spectrum ten twenty-one or through the live link, uh, that is sent out via IBP. It's also placed on our website as well as several Facebook pages. So access remains to the voters and the public. Are there reports of standing committees this evening?
I have one. Finance Committee meeting minutes for April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty submitted by Mrs. Downhour.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the reports of standing committees.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to receive and file reports of standing committees. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Give me one second here as I see Mr. Hall's attempting to enter, so we'll admit him. Mr. Hall, oh, he's working to connect to the audio. Let's give him a second here. Mr. Hall, are you with us?
I am so sorry. I, I was outside doing yard work and I completely lost track of time.
That's a, I, I love it. That's what I should be doing, right? Very good. Well, we're glad to have you here with us. And, uh, we'll let the record reflect that Mr. Hall did, uh, did join the meeting at six fifty-one PM. Are there reports of special committees tonight?
There are none to be presented.
We have no public hearings scheduled, so we'll move to the reading of resolutions, beginning with the third reading of temporary resolution sixty dash twenty.
A resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance and to amend the certificate of appropriations with the county auditor in the General Fund one oh one, offered by Mrs. Downhour, second by Mr. Stotin.
Ms. Downhour?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that, uh, we withdraw temporary resolution sixty dash twenty.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to withdraw temporary resolution sixty dash twenty. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Motion to withdraw passes nine to zero. We now have second reading on temporary resolution sixty-four dash twenty.
A resolution to adopt city of Lancaster policies regarding federal grants, offered by Mrs. Downhour, second by Mr. Stotin.
Ms. Downhour?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the third reading of resolution temporarily numbered sixty-four dash twenty.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the third reading of temporary resolution sixty-four dash twenty. Discussion, Ms. Downhour?
I'll save it for the next one.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion to suspend? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover? Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Very good. Just for the record, I got a little breakup on Mr. Schoonover. That was a yes, correct?
Yes.
Very good. All right. Motion to suspend passes then nine to zero. Ms. Downhour?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record resolution temporarily numbered sixty-four dash twenty.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary resolution sixty-four dash twenty. Discussion, Ms. Downhour?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This resolution is so that we can put into place policies regarding federal grants. And, uh, it will, uh, it is required that we have these policies in place so that we can accept monies from federal, uh, grant.
Done.
Very good. Thank you very much. Further discussion on the motion to pass? Okay, hearing none. Everyone's unmuted. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Temporary resolution sixty-four dash twenty passes nine to zero. We now have first reading on temporary resolution sixty-six dash twenty.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency, OEP A, Water Pollution Control Loan Fund, WPC LF program, and to execute contracts as required, offered by Mr. James, second by Mr. Hall.
Mr. James?
Yes, uh, this particular resolution is specifically targeted at loans to help upgrade our wastewater treatment plant on Lawrence Avenue. And there are several things that were brought up in the finance committee meeting that I will refer some questions to Steve Wellstad. We do have We do have a scheduled meeting for wastewater treatment, uh, committee, uh, on the thirteenth. Um, and that's scheduled to be at the water wastewater plant on Lawrence Avenue, and that's a little bit too close of a room. Uh, the change in venue possibly to room eighteen ninety-seven, I believe. At, uh, city hall would give us a little more room. Um, my wife's, uh, somewhat still fragile, um, health makes it a little bit of a concern for me, but if I show up in a mask, that's what we will do. But from a finance standpoint, there are several things we need to come up with before that meeting. Stephen, can that rate study be done before the meeting on the thirteenth?
So at this point, I cannot answer that. What I will do is I did take notes of all the concerns that were brought up by, uh, the council members during the finance committee meeting. I will discuss those with Mike and Denise and make sure we have answers for those, uh, whether it be via email this week. Or, uh, during next week's, well, I guess the meeting, next meeting, two weeks from now. I will make sure to get some of those issues, uh, answered for you guys so you can, uh, evaluate and go from there.
A couple of other questions that are somewhat, uh, germane to this whole issue. If indeed we do not take advantage of this and postpone the upgrades and the repairs. What will be the impact potentially on our ability to still maintain our, um, our permits for discharge? That's a big question also.
Yeah, I don't know. I'm in a position to answer that, uh, councilman, but, um, again, like I had mentioned in the finance committee meeting, you know, the last upgrades were done early mid nineties. It's twenty-five, thirty years since that's happened. A lot of this equipment has met the end of its useful life. So, you know, I think Safety Service Director Martin mentioned during the finance committee meeting that we are seeing more and more issues with equipment. And if they continue to get pushed back, uh, you know, you're gonna have additional costs there. Outages, equipment going down, that sort of thing. So I imagine that would be more of an issue the longer we push this back.
From my observation on some of the, um, uh, tours that I took, some of that equipment is, is badly worn out. And it is suspect as far as reliability in the future. Um, also, I think there was an issue with, uh, Stephen. Uh, the loan amount from zero percent to, uh, one point two or one point three percent, I believe.
Yes, I will reiterate that, and I apologize again, I did have an error in the, uh, original legislation I sent. It did note that it was zero percent, but I confused, uh, the program we were utilizing here with one that was geared towards combined sewer overflow projects that I'm not aware this one is eligible for. So currently the interest rate we'd be looking at is one point one two, but it could fluctuate slightly. Uh, you know, depending on, um, what changes happened with any prime rates as we, you know, going forward, once we get to a point where we would sign and lock that rate in. Uh, but one point one two is what we're looking at right now in that ballpark.
Okay, thanks, Stephen. The other thing I would ask Treasurer Wolfinger is to give us an idea of what, um, debt might be retired, uh, in order for us to help pay for this. Um, and hopefully have that available for our next meeting. And this, uh, President O is the first, uh, reading of this resolution.
Thank you very much. I, I saw, uh, did you have a question, Mr. Stoughton?
I do. We're not gonna just have him, you know, give his opinion and then call it first reading. Um, at the end of the day, this is a financial issue. We're talking, I mean, nowhere in the legislation we received talked about twenty-one point two five million dollars. All right, so that's a big, that's a big number. So it's not just a little bit of money. That's a lot of money, which is gonna have to be paid back. And it is our fiduciary responsibility for the ratepayers of this city to understand exactly how that's going to be done. So I'm not gonna argue the fact that the upgrades need to occur. What I am gonna argue is there needs to be transparency on how we're going to pay for this. All right, and that's, uh, that is my point, uh, in finance, and that is my point now. I'm not arguing need. I'm arguing the fact that it needs to be well, uh, transparent on how much this is going to cost and how long ratepayers are gonna have to pay for it.
Thank you, Mr. Stoughton. Other comments or questions here before?
Hey, this is Warman, uh, just real quick. I, I really, um, I, um, I, I think Tom makes some really good points. Tom Stoughton makes some really good points. I, I'm also, uh, sensitive to, um, Tom's, um, comment about the, um, uh, about holding a hearing in closed, um, in confined spaces or just holding the, the meeting in person. I'm wondering if we might want to consider, given the importance of this particular meeting, um, that it occur, um, we might want to consider the option of holding it as a Zoom meeting. Um, and then, uh, potentially making that, uh, public, um, the same way that we make city council meetings. Um, public so that if anyone does have an interest from the, um, community to participate, they would at least be able to, uh, observe the conversation. Um, we, you know, we're not out of the, uh, out of the coronavirus, uh, period yet. We had twelve infections over the weekend in Fairfield County. Um, and if, um, if we do have family members that are somewhat vulnerable, uh, then, uh, using our, um, online capabilities might be the most appropriate way for us to safely proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Yeah, um, you, you hit it on the head when you laid out how we would have to move forward if that committee was going to meet, uh, virtually. And so, uh, someone, um, likely the committee chair or someone's gonna have to get with Interphase and ask if it would be possible for them to simply stream that one out for us, uh, in order to make it available to the public. So that's something that we can check on. I know Interphase is on, um, because they're streaming tonight, so maybe I can get a text back at some point. Um, or, uh, we can find that out at the end of the meeting, but that surely is a possibility. Other comments on this particular legislation before we move on? We had good discussion about it in finance. I'm not seeing anyone else who's, Mr. Martin?
Yes, a couple of things there. Yes, President O, uh, Interphase is doing a good job. By the way, they're gonna volunteer to put B Z A in our, our city planning commission. On their box cast there, uh, per your suggestion, Bob, Competi has come through for us on that. Uh, I would say definitely we're gonna have more people answer more questions on our city council. Uh, if Tom James wants to have a subcommittee, uh, we can talk about that further, uh, Mr. James. No matter what we do in that subcommittee, I think because of the discussion in our finance as well as here, we need to have a, a more thorough, robust information here provided at regular city council. Uh, if I ha- understand, uh, Councilman Stoughton correct, maybe what we probably ought to do is an amendment on this one as well to try to put it in the announce what we're looking at. I think that if I understand you, that's your, your desire as well, which would make sense to maybe put a figure in here because looking at, uh, sixty-six dash forty. Uh, there really is not a mention of what kind of loan we're looking at. Maybe we could do an amendment, uh, is that fine? But that's what I was gonna put out there for you.
Re- remind me of the, the timing requirement. This, we can't hold this over for three readings, Stephen?
So the issue we're dealing with here, um, and why we asked for two readings initially is when, um, again, we had a loan for another project, uh, recently that got pushed back by O E P A, I guess, due to the workload, other issues. It got pushed back and that ended up delaying the ability for us to get the loan. And our concern here was we wanted to get this, at least the nomination form submitted as early as possible so that we can be higher up in the pecking order. You know, with all the COVID stuff, we had concerns, you know, they're not working in the offices. What kind of effect is that gonna have on their workforce and the ability for them to keep these loans moving and issued when we want them? So again, our thought was that we want to be higher up in the pecking order so that if there are some that get pushed back, that we are less likely to experience that issue. So again, I'm not gonna sit here and say it's absolutely critical. We only have two readings. But again, uh, in order for us to hopefully avoid that being a possibility, we are strongly encouraging or hoping that we can get this done in two readings. But again, if it needs to go three because of the issues that have been brought up, um, again, I don't know that that's a, a critical issue, I guess, in my opinion.
Well, we'll leave it to, uh, to the, to the sponsor to decide. The only reason I was asking, I'll get with you, Ms., just a moment, Ms., Ms. Downhour. Uh, the only reason I was asking is because I believe that the third reading of this would fall on the eighth, and we will be having a meeting in person. At this, at this time, I, I don't think that we're going to end up meeting on the eighteenth or whatever the next, uh, yeah, the eighteenth. I think that one may still be virtual, so it'd just be easier to have the more robust conversation in person. However, uh, we'll leave it to the chair. Melody, you have your hand up or you just got your, hold on, you're not on mute, so I'm gonna come to you in a second, Melody, because Ms. Downhour was first. Go ahead, Ms. Downhour.
So the only thing that I'm also concerned with is that in the resolution, it, it gives the authority to the mayor to execute a contract. So I think the amendment would need to have the dollar amount spelled out in it as well as remove that option. Because if we don't get the rate analysis back, you can still submit for the loan, but I'm assuming that even if you got approved, you wouldn't necessarily have to accept the loan. Is that a correct statement?
Uh, my understanding and my experience with the program is that yes, again, the initial, what the reason we wanted this two readings is to get that initial nomination form and application in. But we're not signing any contracts at that point. We're not locked in. This is just putting us again on the list, on the pecking order and, and keeping things moving. So, uh, yeah, again, from my perspective, if you need a little more time there, removing that, that sentence, that verbiage about executing contracts would not slow us down from submitting the application.
Ms. Downer, thanks for bringing that up. I think that's a, a, a good direction forward. So if we can get that amendment at the next meeting and, uh, just allow for the submission of it versus the actual approval or execution of it, then, then that would address some of those concerns. So we'll ask, see if that, uh, i- if that amendment can come. Anyway, uh, okay, Ms. Ms. Bobbitt, I know you needed.
Well, that, that's exactly what I was gonna bring up. You know, I brought it up in finance that maybe we could take the mayor's name out of there that he could, um, have that approval. Uh, but I mean, there's, there's, uh, you know, the two things that we've brought up to change in here, but we still have, um, you know, as Tom has pointed out and as others has pointed out tonight, we still have several questions.
Sure.
Um, so maybe in two weeks we'll have all those answers.
Well, and, and I just wanna make sure I have the date correct. You were saying Wednesday, the thirteenth, right, Mr. James?
That is correct, at eight AM, and it's now scheduled for the Lawrence plant, uh, Lawrence Avenue plant, and we would change that venue to the room eighteen ninety-seven at city hall.
Okay, um, and, and, uh, I did get confirmation from Mr. Competi that he is willing to stream that out for you in order to make it public, uh, if that would be the desire of the committee. And so, um, I appreciate Bob and, and Interphase video and their willingness to be so flexible and to work with us during, during these challenging times. So is that what you want there, Mr. James, then, or you just wanna make it open and public?
I think we need to make it open and public, uh, just so we have transparency.
So you do not need it zoomed out?
No.
Okay. Very good. Anything else on this particular piece of legislation? All right, then, Mr. James, what's your pleasure?
I do wanna schedule the meeting right now unless we, um, and hopefully have that information ready, uh, to room eighteen ninety-seven. Uh, we certainly can, uh, social distance and wear masks if we, uh, if we so choose. Uh, but I think it's important for us to, uh, answer a lot of these questions, especially in this, uh, financial, um, in the times of these financial situations.
Okay, and, uh, first reading then?
First reading, correct.
First reading then on this legislation, and we'll look for some potential amended legislation coming next meeting. Very good, thank you. Temporary resolution sixty-seven dash twenty.
Give me one second, please.
No problem.
A resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance, amend the certificate of other sources and appropriations with the county auditor and to increase estimated receipts in the L dot fund two oh eight offered by Mr. Schoonover, second by Mr. James.
Mr. Schoonover. Oh, there you go.
Actually, first of three readings, please.
First reading then on temporary resolution sixty-seven dash twenty. Are there any other resolutions to come before Lancaster City Council this evening? If not, we'll look to the reading of ordinances, and I have none on my agenda. And so are there any ordinances to come before Lancaster City Council this evening? If not, we'll move to tabled legislation and, um, I'll ask if there's any action on tabled legislation tonight. Seeing no one looking to gain the floor, I would like to recommend that we schedule the public hearings for the three pieces that we have, which are temporary ordinance four dash twenty, temporary ordinance five dash twenty, and temporary ordinance six dash twenty. Uh, and, um, schedule those for Olive Dale on June eighth at six thirty PM. That would be our regular city council meeting. And again, as I mentioned in finance, we have procured that, that building and, uh, it will allow us to open it up in such a way that the public can come, can participate. Hopefully by first of June, we'll start to see even more things opening up and continue to see the number of cases of COVID nineteen in Ohio dropping. Uh, uh, I, outside of any just sort of massive shift or change, I just, I can't imagine that we won't be able to move forward with that. Um, I will, however, uh, suggest that we hold our, our next meeting, which is May eighteenth virtually. One more time, I had been advocating that we do that in person, and that's mostly just because I, I can't wait to see some of your smiling faces in person. Um, but we don't need to do that. And, uh, so given some of the discussion we've had here, we'll keep that as a virtual meeting on the eighteenth, plan to meet at Olive Dale on June eighth. The only other thing that I will mention quickly is, um, at some point, we'll need to take action on the piece that is tabled, that is related to the tax levy. Currently, as I mentioned prior, the tax levy was defeated twenty-five fourteen to thirty ninety-two or fifty-five percent against forty-five percent for. However, there are three hundred and fifty-eight or so provisional ballots that are yet to be counted. And there are nearly three thousand ballots that are outstanding. And what that means is they were requested and they've not yet been received. If they were postmarked by the appropriate date and it's just the mail that has slowed it down, some of those may be counted. That is a significant number. And, uh, certainly has the potential, should a great many of those end up coming through, change the results of the, of the levy. As I mentioned in finance, I'm not convinced that that is going to happen, but we're gonna leave those pieces on the table until the election's certified. And we know for sure. With that, I don't believe there's anything else to discuss regarding our tabled legislation tonight. We will then move on to unfinished business. Does anyone have any unfinished business this evening they would like to discuss? Uh, yes, I see you, Mr. Matlin. Go ahead.
I would be remiss if I didn't talk a little bit about the, uh, potential for layoffs within the safety forces. Um, I think a lot of people know where I come from, um, spending twenty-eight years riding the trucks in town, riding the medic. And I've lived through, um, the layoffs at the fire department, um, several times. And I was hired in nineteen ninety-one, and at that time, they hired eleven of us the same day, and that made us seventy-nine firefighters in nineteen ninety-one. Um, there were layoffs in nineteen ninety-four. After that, there were layoffs in the two thousands after that. My last one, I was thirteen firefighters in two thousand and eleven, I believe I was captain. So i- if the budget cuts have to happen because of the COVID nineteen, I understand completely that we're gonna be short on income tax money. Um, budget's not gonna be able to make, uh, income's not gonna be able to make the budget. This is gonna be some very hard decisions, and I do not envy the mayor nor the service director to have to do these things. However, I think we need to keep in mind what, uh, essential employees are. And if the numbers that have been in the newspaper, um, come true, that means that we will be back to a staffing level, at least in the fire department of, from the mid eighties. And in the mid eighties, you know, we only had a one percent income tax, and then we passed a one point four or five in the late eighties for the safety forces, the point four or five for the safety forces. And that got us to where we could have the staffing on, at the fire department at least. I'm not aware of the police department staffing, um, back then or now. However, from then until the two thousands, we were able to have all this staffing just from the general fund. And what has changed since then is all the other things that come from the general fund. So I would hope that the mayor, the service director, when, if these times come, they would look at the salaries coming out of that general fund and try to, I realize it'd be a s- really hard decisions. And I don't wanna see anybody lose their job. However, there are positions in there that maybe would have to be cut prior to a safety forces being cut. And that, that's what I wanna make sure they understand. And I would, you know, get outside your box and maybe look at, um, some higher salaries in all those. I realize you can't lay off with a seniority system and you have to lay off low seniority. However, we can abolish positions that are higher paying positions, at least temporarily until we can get some tax money in or get something figured out. So that's what I would say now. So that's what I would say now, and I would hope that doesn't come true, but like I said, I, I understand what might have to happen. But I would hope all, everybody would be looked at that were their salary comes out of that general fund before we went that deep into the safety forces. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mattlin. I appreciate that. I saw Mr. Stotin looking to gain the floor. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, sir. Just to kind of piggyback, you know, Jack's comments. My question is really more for the mayor. Have, have we received budget adjustments from the, all the municipal court entities of, with, you know, a ten or twenty percent reduction to this point? Because, you know, it's, it's kind of to Jack's point. I mean, if I, all positions are important. You know, everybody, you know, being employed is important, but there are times where, you know, safety can be in my, in, in many of our minds more important, you know, safety to, you know, property and people. So I'm curious that have we received potential budget adjustments from the courts?
I have to go back to my file, but I don't believe we have. We've received them from all the other general fund departments.
So do they believe that they're not a part of this or? Yeah, I know it's a loaded question, but you can dance, you can tap, dance around it as much as you like.
Right. Well, the judges have the authority to order their budgets, whether city council approves it or not or the mayor decides to cut it. So that's kind of the dilemma we're facing there.
Okay, well, I mean, is there any level of cooperation at this point or is it, do you have to poke the bear, so to speak?
The, the, this, the municipal court departments are friendly and, and usually open for discussion. And the judges come up every year at budget time and have a meeting with me to discuss her budget. So they're, they're certainly open to discussions. How far they're willing to go is another matter.
Very good. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
I would say to Councilman Mattlin, we, we hear what you say. You know, certainly safety forces layoffs are in the news. Nobody cares if my secretary gets laid off or somebody in the income tax department or since the auditors here, somebody in the auditor department. The public doesn't see them, isn't impacted by them at all. So it's safety forces that make the news. And, you know, despite whatever budget cuts might be imminent with the loss of revenue, it's the safety forces that make the news.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate the discussion. Anyone else have something on this topic or any other unfinished business they'd like to bring up this evening? Yes, I'll come back to you, Mr. Mattlin. Go ahead.
Um, I, I would be remiss if I didn't say that, and I'll give a compliment to Mr. Stotin, who's basically teaching all of us a lesson about how to read legislation. Basically, we're talking about the water pollution, water loan legislation in tonight. And I'm sure we all read it, and we all read it probably Friday when it came out, but then he had some really good topics and really coverage. So I'm sitting here taking notes, and I just want to give him a compliment that he is teaching me a lesson about how to, how to do this job. And I'd much appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, I'm just going to leave that one right there because I got something all teed up, and, but I'm just going to let it, I'm going to let it lay. Thank you, Mr. Mattlin. Mr. Stotin is indeed a great asset, and I learn something all the time as we have opportunity to interact. So I appreciate him and his long-term service and, and the great depth of knowledge he brings to this process. Anyone else have something on this this evening? I see Paul's hand is up. Paul, go ahead. Hold on, I had you muted. There you go. Go for it.
Actually, I forgot to take it down at Councilman O. But I, I will, let me just go back on what Jack Mattlin said. We are considering more than just the safety forces. That seems to be the message out there, and, and it's apparent why we would want that message out there. But everything and everybody is on the table, and it is very, very difficult. It would be the hardest thing in my life I've probably encountered, and I know all of you are aware of that. So it's being very thoughtful. We, we hope we don't have to go to that level. And, you know, it would be wonderful to see the income tax levy. It's going to have to be passed someday. We all know that because if we cut down to the, to what we're seeing, it's, it's not going to do our city a good service at all. We are going to consider everything.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. I was not on city council when it happened the last time, but I was involved with the city. And I remember how difficult it was for people that were in those spots to have to, to pull the trigger on those very challenging decisions. And so I know that everything's being considered, and we're hopeful that the state and federal government can get their stuff together and help us out so that we don't have to do that, at least not at this particular time. Anyone else have something on this particular topic? Or any other unfinished business this evening? Okay, the only thing we need to do then, and I'll look to maybe Mr. Stotin to make this motion, is we need a motion for the clerk to attend public records training for a particular group of city council members. That group includes, as soon as I find it, because she sent it to me, and now it's missing. There we are. It includes Tom Stotin, Holly Miller-Downer, David Ull, Don McDaniel, Corey Schoonover, and Melody Bobbit. Mr. Stone, can I get such a motion?
I will make that motion, and I'll let the clerk write it up exactly how it's supposed to sound.
Very good.
And thank you for representing us.
Yes, thank you very much to the clerk. Can I get a second maybe from Mr. Schoonover? Probably need to hear verbally. There we go. One more time.
We know what he meant.
Second, yes. We have a motion and a second to appoint the clerk for those to stand in for public records training. Want to unmute everyone? Any discussion on this? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you to the clerk. Very good. Does anyone have any new business this evening they would like to discuss? Any new business? All right, if not, we'll ask that the clerk read our schedule of upcoming meetings. There you go.
Coming meetings for council, May eighteenth at six thirty PM via Zoom. The meeting after is June eighth at six thirty PM at Olive Dale. At that meeting, there'll be public hearings on temporary ordinance four dash twenty, five dash twenty, and six dash twenty. Upcoming safety committee meetings. Water, water pollution control will be May thirteenth at eight AM at the City Hall eighteen ninety-seven conference room. Finance, May eighteenth at six PM via Zoom. Safety, May twenty-second at seven thirty AM at City Hall eighteen ninety-seven conference room. And finally, the code enforcement and zoning, June first at eight AM at City Hall Conference Room eighteen ninety-seven.
Very good. Thank you very much. Are there any bills this evening?
There are none to be presented.
Is there a need for an executive session? Seeing none, a motion to adjourn is in order, Mr. Schoonover?
Uh, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Very good.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, same sign. We are adjourned. Thank you all very much. We'll look forward to seeing you right back here on the eighteenth for our next and what I hope will be final Zoom meeting. Have a great night.
I want to make sure that Holly and Tom are okay with their signatures typed in. We have to go over that. I'm sorry.
That's okay. I see Holly shaking her head yes. Mr. Stotin is giving the thumbs up.
Thank you.
We are good to go. All right. Thank you all very much. Take it easy.